Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order and the presentation of colors tonight is by Inca High School. Will you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you remain standing, I ask that we observe a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
We approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And all those in favor?
Aye.
We now have our superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everyone. Well, Mother Nature paid us a friendly visit this past weekend and extended in through the, to the week. And so, we lost a couple of attendance days, but we are now fully back in action just in time for exams coming around the corner. I do want to take just, just a minute to recognize our maintenance department. Snow came down fairly heavy on Friday night. Saturday, our maintenance department kicked into action and under the leadership of Mr. Clark White, our director, and Clark, I will please pass this on to your team. They were working on campuses Saturday, and then they came back Sunday afternoon. And even though Mother Nature didn't work with us, they had those campuses ready for action on Monday. So, we were delayed a little bit, but thank you. We are so fortunate in this school system to, to have such dedicated individuals. And our communications department did an outstanding job in terms of keeping our public notified. And our transportation department, I don't see fond of their name, but those guys were out checking all kinds of, we may still have some of them back in some code somewhere in Buncombe County, but thank you for what you do. Our testing is still on track. We are scheduled to complete end, of course, testing in our middle schools and high schools. That will take place January 23rd and 24th will be the final two days of testing. The first day of second semester, can you believe that it is around the corner? And that is January 26th. And on the 25th, we will have an optional workday because that will allow our staff to help transition into a brand-new semester. So, that is on schedule and my understanding, looking at several weather maps, that we're going to be able to, to move into testing and transition into that new semester. We are in the process of implementing a number of activities and programs across our school system. Our one-to-one laptop distribution, our compassionate schools model that we've talked about previously and is so active out in the schools. But we're putting a lot of attention in our advanced education visit that's going to take place in late March. And of course, that is the national certification process that takes place and that visitating, visitation team that will be here with us. And so, on February 2nd, our next board meeting, we will actually have a work session to bring you up to date. Mrs. Swanger will be leading that with her team. A lot of planning taking place and we'll share all of that wonderful work that's, that's going on in our schools right now. New promotional billboards. I don't know if you've noticed as you've driven around Asheville that we have had some wonderful promotions and advertisement on billboards. This week, we will have eight new boards across Buncombe County and I think that will cover all six of our districts. You can see the new billboard behind me and what a wonderful message, "Dreams begin here." That happens to be TC Robertson graduates in that particular picture. And that image certainly does convey our mission to help all of our students realize their full potential as we prepare them for a 21st century career. How did I do? I'm getting prepared, memorized for the advanced ed visit, right, Mrs. Swanger? We have two very special guests. In fact, we have a number of guests here tonight. Former chairman of our Buncombe County Commissioners, Mr. David Gant, and Commissioner Holly Jones. And we've got a special video that we want to kick off. An opportunity for us to say a heartfelt thank you, but it's sort of to usher the new in, I see another special guest with us and that is Mr. Al Whitesides. Al is no stranger to, certainly to support of public schools and we're so pleased to see you as a member of the new commission, Al. So, thank you for being here. And without further ado, let's take a look at this, this video. The directive of Buncombe County Schools is to prepare our students for their tomorrow, helping them become successful, responsible citizens in an ever-changing global society. As we extend our gratitude to the Buncombe County Commissioners for their support of this directive, it is also quite fitting that we recognize the contributions that David Gant and Holly Jones have made to our school system during their tenure. Let's take a look at some of their crowning achievements.
King Creek Middle School is a wonderful educational institution. We focus on high-quality academics as well as numerous fine arts opportunities. We have highly qualified teachers who are also compassionate and they work very hard together as a team to help mold students into future contributing members of society. And we at King Creek, we proudly serve in public education because we want to help make a positive impact for these students as they become the future leaders of America.
Behind every great school is great stakeholders and at Hominy Valley, we have great stakeholders. We have parents who send their children to school ready to learn. They are supportive of our staff. We have a staff who's committed to giving each individual child the best education possible. When people visit Hominy Valley, they say, "Wow, your school is so welcoming. Everyone has a smile on their face." And in fact, we are known as Happy Valley instead of Hominy Valley.
Good morning, North Windy Ridge. I'm Cages.
And I'm Toby. With today's news for Thursday, January 5th, 2017.
At North Windy Ridge, we make connections. And these connections we work on are through everyday activities as well as student clubs and leadership groups that we have at our school. We hope that these connections allow our students to learn to make connections with each other. And when they get that confidence, we can help guide them as they move into decisions that will affect their future and their family's future. And I think that really defines North Windy Ridge.
Evelyn Intermediate School is a very unique school. We serve students from five very different elementary schools that come to us from five very different communities. Every year, we bring in over 400 new students into fifth grade and we send more than 400 on to the middle school to continue the next phase of their education. When you walk through the halls of our beautiful school, you'll see teachers engaging students with 21st century technology. We're proud of our school and we look forward to serving students for generations to come.
Our fifth and sixth graders are 10, 11 years old and we have found that this time has really given them the opportunity to gain the habits and the skills that will allow them to be successful in their future endeavors. We are a global-ready school. We have implemented the digital one-to-one initiative and we are a leader in new school, which is putting students in charge of their own learning. The Charles T. Coontz Intermediate School would like to thank the taxpayers and our commissioners for investing in the intermediate school concept.
Nesbit Discovery Academy is a special place because of our students. It's truly an amazing place to learn. Our students come in here and focus on project-based learning and investigations. We also focus on earning college-level credits beginning their freshman year all throughout their senior year. And finally, we're going to give these students the opportunity to go out into local business and industries and truly decide what do they want to do for their life. On behalf of our students, staff, and faculty here at Nesbit Discovery Academy, we'd like to send a heartfelt thank you to our board, our county commissioners, and all of those who have supported us for giving our students this great opportunity to invent their tomorrow.
We are Inca. We are proud. So, fasten your seat belts because these jets are getting ready to fly.
It's so wonderful to have Inca Intermediate in our community and to be able to be a part of it because it is a place where we can support our pre-teenaged students. The teachers really have a chance to get to know those students, to build relationships with them, and to provide that personal support that helps our fifth and sixth graders navigate those challenging pre-teenage years. We are so appreciative of all of our commissioners, commissioners like Ms. Jones and Mr. Gant, for supporting our schools and bringing new schools into our community and making those dreams a reality.
David and Holly, we wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Thank you for your dedication in public service and the commitment to the success of Buncombe County Schools.
Well, I'd like to clap.
Well, David and Holly are examples of Buncombe County Commissioners who have been dreamers, reasonable dreamers. They have listened to our requests and they've clapped their hands and decided, "We can make that happen." Doing things that are absolutely right for all the right reasons is very admirable. And we in Buncombe County are richer for these actions. New schools that were, that were highlighted in this video, how many, well, not many, if any, can say that commissioners have funded this many great schools for our students in Buncombe County. David graduated from Campbell School of Law and holds a degree from Chapel Hill, Go Heels. Mr. Gant was elected commissioner in 1996 and chairman in 2008. And throughout this time, he has been willing to do what needed to be done to lead the commission and also the school system in what's good for Buncombe County students and also for our teachers. We've got teacher supplements and technology that was funded far beyond what the state did. All these projects and numerous others, we appreciate the leadership that's there. Ms. Jones came along and followed Mr. Gant's lead and they have done, together, they have joined hands and done many, many things for us, innumerable things for us. And we appreciate that. At this time, I'd like for Mr. Bryant and Ms. McMahon to come forward. They have some things that they'd like to say.
Chairman Gant, if you could step forward, please. Before I present this plaque, I want to say a couple of things. I met Mr. Gant in 1996 when I moved here, Asheville Optimists Club. In fact, I met him, he was running for county commissioner for the first time, if I remember that right. And just a couple of things in, in the 10-plus years that I've been on the board that, that I want to say thank you for on behalf of me, for this board, for past board members, but mostly for the people in our system that work every day and the kids in our communities and the families that your efforts and leadership have helped us with. We have had some, some interesting dynamics and some challenging times over the years with budgets from the state level. And I don't remember a time when we have come to you as a chairman and the commission as a whole and said, "We really need this and we need this for the kids in this community," where you ever said, "No." Thank you for that. You've also pulled me aside on, I won't tell the stories, but on two separate occasions, you pulled me aside at times when there were some things being discussed and you said, "Pat, you need to go back to your board. That won't be a good idea. That's not something the commissioners will support because we don't think that's best for our kids." And you were right. And you did it in a way that I never realized you had asked me to correct something that we were thinking about doing. And for that, I say thank you and I appreciate that. Lastly, before I read the plaque and present this, I think my dad, my dad said this to me, I know he didn't make it up, but he said, "You can tell a lot about institutions, governments, and people by how they treat their elderly and how they look after their kids." And you have done that for us in Buncombe County schools way above and beyond the call of duty and for that, I thank you. And we have a plaque tonight that says, "Presented to David Gant, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, 1996 to 2016. With gratitude from Buncombe County School's students, teachers, and staff, your generosity will benefit our school system for years to come." Thank you.
Thank you.
It's only one page. I know you've got a meeting. Thank you for taking time to honor former Commissioner Jones and myself. It's the most important investment we can make to take, make sure we have good schools. If you break it down, that's what, that's one of the biggest things government can do. And it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. You're all good people. You're very innovative. I mean, how many people do a ribbon cutting with a robot? Which happened here. I've had the pleasure of cutting ribbons and I don't think I missed one for 11 schools. And there's a lot of commissioners, I told our crowd, Holly, there's a lot of commissions that don't open any schools, ever. But it's not just about schools. It's about taking care of the people who run the schools. And Holly Jones and the commissioners, there was never a time that the supplement was challenged. The only time it was really challenged was to do more because, and I can tell you firsthand, growing up in a family with a widowed teacher of 35 years, that I knew your pain. You don't get paid enough. You know that and I know that and I'm not going to preach to you. I'm preaching to the choir today. But it was real easy because I saw how much you did for our kids. My kids went through the schools, the TC Robertson District. And it has been a joy to be involved with schools named after people like Reynolds and Robertson and, and Evelyn, Coontz. I mean, a lot of them I've, I've known through the years and the ones I didn't know, I knew by reputation. And we may see, I wouldn't be surprised, we saw some of these names on some schools at some point because the contributions continue to go on there. Between county, city, AB Tech, and libraries, I was fortunate to be able to vote to approve over $320 million for education. And 11 new schools resulted from that. We renovated, I think, every other school. But ladies and gentlemen, nothing happens without these, these folks do it. We just give them some money to help them do it. But they make the tough calls, when, where. When we first got here, it was a squeaky wheel getting the grease. And one of the first, the board changed the rules to make it needs-based. You did so many best practices. You changed with the times. We didn't know 20 years ago, we didn't know what, we didn't have an iPhone, it didn't exist. You didn't have laptops. So, you're changing with the times. We are blessed to have a school board. And all of you on here now, you get this, that number one priority is the kids, like Pat was saying. It's about the kids. But you do that through having good professional teachers, good educators, good non-certified staff that, that will go out on a snowy Sunday and clean to take the chance that maybe this, this might open tomorrow. If it does, we're going to have these kids ready. We want to be safe. It all works well. We are blessed in Buncombe County to have such a system. Thank you for your part and I'm glad to be a small part of it. Thank you.
I have to pull the mic way down to follow Pat Bryant. So, I was trying to figure it out this morning and we have known each other now 18, maybe 19 years, half our lives, right? Yeah. Uh-huh. Yeah, we'll, we'll go with that math. So, Holly and I, I got to know Holly especially closely when we worked together at the YWCA of Asheville. And what an honor that was. I knew Holly when she ran for her first office for the city of Asheville and we'd have a lot of debrief sessions on the next morning after a meeting, some anger, some tears. And, and that is the beauty of Holly Jones. Holly is not a politician. She wasn't elected official. Holly is a public servant. She brings her whole heart and her whole self to everything she does. And when she shows up, whether it's to sit behind the big desk or to stand at the polls to speak out for another candidate, her, she brings her whole self to that, her passion, her fire. Holly is a fighter and, but she fights for the people who need it most. Holly fights for the people who don't have the wealth, who don't have the voice, who aren't able to speak up for themselves. And Holly is an innovative thinker. She, she recognizes, for instance, when we talk about the Family Justice Center, it was Holly who saw that this was a, a successful model in other places and we could bring this here and we could solve some serious community problems that we were facing in Buncombe County. So, we have been blessed by your leadership. We have been blessed by your passion, by your heart, by your head. Thank you very much. Now, I get to read the plaque with my glasses on because I'm so young. Presented to Holly Jones, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, 2008 through 2016. With deep gratitude from Buncombe County School's students, teachers, and staff, your generosity will benefit our school system for years to come. Thank you so much.
I don't have a piece of paper, so I'll be very brief. And I learned early on that I was very lucky to serve with the chairman that really was about public education. I mean, he just exuded it at, at every moment. This was his, his top love, his top priority. And I learned a lot from that. I was easy, I was an easy learner too, growing up in the public schools and I had that, I was also a daughter of a teacher. But we're very fortunate to have had the leadership of David Gant for, for 20 years and I'm fortunate to have served with him. So, I can't add a lot to his eloquent remarks about how important you all are and how important the whole team of educators are and the whole team of Buncombe County Schools that make, make this place just run seamlessly. My two things to add are how lucky are we to live in this community that does value education, public, public education. And this community that values public education was so wise to elect all of you to, to carry that and be those stewards. And I am grateful for that community and their, their wisdom and that leadership and their, and their belief in us investing and knowing that that's, that's our number one priority because that's where, it is where dreams begin. It's where the dreams begin and I'm glad to be a dreamer too. One of the last things I did as a commissioner was I went out to Oakley School, I think it was third graders, and we talked about the future, we know, possibilities and how you, you know, careers or whatnot. And so, it was, it was a really fitting way to, to end the circle of, of my service to Buncombe County was with those third graders at Oakley. Because the other important thing about public education, public education, is that it is the fabric of democracy. We are, we are teaching our kids for the future, for the strength of our economy, for our own self-interest, who will be taking care of us when we're old. But more importantly, we are educating kids because we believe in this country where everybody gets to succeed and everybody gets to, to participate. And by goodness, that is what public education is about. And that is what y'all, the hard work that you do, that's what you're fighting for, is you're fighting for our democracy. So, thank you, I can't tell you how sweet this is and how meaningful it is and it's great to have my family here and it's great to be with David and Cindy, I so appreciated your words on so many levels. And Dr. Baldwin, keep on doing all the great work. Y'all are smart to have a superintendent like, like Dr. Baldwin and Chairwoman Franklin. Thank you for all your great leadership too. So, we'll skedaddle out of here and let you actually get down to work, but it's a heartfelt thanks.
Next, we have public comment?
Next, we have public comment? Thank you. We now move on to the, excuse me, the information agenda.
Good news, ma'am.
Good news. We don't have any. I mean, there's no good news tonight. It's not that we don't have any good news, it's just that we don't have any tonight. So we have a representative from our external audit who is going to speak to us, I believe. And he's the representative of Anderson Smith &amp; Wyke, P L L C. Board members have gotten copies of the financial report and have had opportunity to read them.
Let me introduce him. This is Mike Wyke with Anderson Smith &amp; Wyke, and he's going to present our audit report for 2015-16.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, I'm pleased to be here tonight.
Welcome.
Like Ms. Frisby said, to present the audit report. First, I just want to take a brief second to tell you, it's very refreshing to see the presentations before. I go to a lot of schools throughout the state, different districts, and I will tell you, it's not so common to have such a good relationship with commissioners as this. So y'all are very fortunate in that regard.
We're very blessed.
But I'll tell you, I'm not going to go over this entire document in detail tonight. I'm just going to hit on the actual items that we report on, the opinion letters and the results of our findings of the audit. You all had it in front of you ahead of time, so if you have any questions whatsoever, feel free to stop me and interrupt me, and we'll answer those questions. The first thing I'm going to start with, within the bound, comprehensive annual financial report, is going to be the actual audited financial statements. And I'm just going to point out where the opinion letter is, that's the main item on this. But if you go over into the financial section on page one, this is our opinion letter on the financial statements. And I'm pleased to report that we issued an unmodified, or commonly referred to as a clean audit report. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give as your independent CPAs on a set of financial statements. And when we say unmodified, what that really means is during the scope of our audit, we did not come upon anything that would cause us to modify the opinion, where there would be one item that was outside of the accounting standards, that was in irregularity. So there were no items that would cause any modifications of that report. On page three, you'll see where we actually signed the report, and I just want to point out that our phone number is there, so if anyone ever has any questions at a later date, feel free to give us a call. But like I said, I'm not going to go into the statements in detail. I think management does a good job of keeping the board abreast of the changes in fund balance during the year. I do want to mention, throughout the state, the level of fund balance is a very hot topic. We hear that on all of our districts. And I just wanted to point out to everyone, as you're probably already well aware, when you look at your general fund, fund balance, don't always just compare that to your revenues and expenditures out of the general fund. Because what you've got to understand is, and you probably already do so, if you have any reductions of the state monies, or the federal monies, the only way you make that up is with your general fund, fund balance. If you have state mandated increases for benefits, state mandated raises like we had last year, which I'm very deserving of the employees, but the state doesn't always fund those full amounts. They may tell you, you've got to raise this amount, but they don't pay for it. So where does that come out of? That comes out of your general fund, fund balance. So that's what I always tell the board, is make sure when you look at it, look at it in totality of comparing that general fund, fund balance to the revenues and expenditures out of the general fund, and the federal fund, and the state fund. But with that said, I'm just going to skip over to the compliance portion of the audit, and this is the smaller bound document that we've presented. And believe it or not, this takes the vast majority of our time in our testing, because this is where we're looking at the internal controls and the policies and procedures of the district, and looking at the compliance of the district. Making sure that all the monies are expended in accordance with applicable state and federal laws, and making sure that there's good policies and procedures in place, so as monies essentially just aren't walking out the door, that we've got good controls over those monies. Within this section, there's three reports that we issue as your independent CPAs. One is on the overall financial statements taken as a whole. One specifically relates to state monies that the district receives through DPI. One specifically relates to any and all federal monies that the district receives. Pleased to say, on all three of those reports, they were unmodified or clean audit reports. So the highest level of assurance on those three reports as well. Within that, you still can have what we call a financial statement finding. We can issue the clean opinion, but still have individual instances of non-compliance or internal control weaknesses that we are required to report on. And I just want to take the time to specifically mention those to you as the governing board. On page 10, you'll see the first finding that we had, and this is an item where there was, during our testing, we noted one instance where an expenditure was made where a purchase order was not obtained prior to the purchase being made, the encumbrance. And what you're really after there, when you do a purchase order, what you're doing there is trying to say, if you need to purchase $10,000 worth of supplies, you're going to put this order in for this $10,000, but if your budget only has $8,000 in it, there's a problem. You're trying to spend more than you've got room in the budget. So that's the importance of making sure that you get that purchase order reissued before you go ahead and order and pay for those goods. In the scheme of things, though, nothing was over budget, so there wasn't an issue there. It was just that there was one instance where the monies were not properly going through the internal control channels that you should have. And to be honest, this is something that we probably would not have reported on a singular instance, but there was this instance last year also, where there was maybe a few more instances. And whenever you have a prior year finding, if you know one item this year that wasn't corrected, you still have to report that. But we discussed that with management, and hopefully going forward, that will be taken care of next year. The next item on page 11, this was the second finding that we noted, and this relates to the recording of compensated abscences, commonly referred to as your annual leave. When we come in, we didn't try to audit the prior year numbers, but we have to look at the prior year numbers as part of our audit to make sure that the numbers roll forward right. And what we had noted was, on the annual leave balances, last year, the numbers weren't grossed up for benefits appropriately. And when I say grossed up for benefits, what I'm really saying is if somebody's, you record annual leave on the hours that you earn, and let's say that your salary is $15 an hour, really when you pay this person out, you're going to pay $15 an hour, plus 7.65 for FICA, plus the applicable retirement rate. So it's clearly cost you more than the $15. And last year, it just wasn't grossed up appropriately, so we had to gross that number up to correct the beginning balances and report that also. Again, this is something that's an easy fix, it's nothing that caused any real issues in the current year items, other than just correcting it and moving forward. The next item that we noticed, a finding is on page 12, and this is, we noted this at a couple of the elementary schools. And what was happening at the elementary schools, they were collecting monies from the students, and instead of depositing this money into the school's bank account, the PTO or PTA would come by and pick up the money and deposit it into the PTO, PTA's account. And what it is, you lose control of that, because let's say that the school collected $2,000, the PTO, PTA comes and picks up the $2,000, takes it and puts it in their bank. We never really know if that $2,000 comes back into the district from the PTO, PTA. So there's really a lack of good controls on that. We did not notice anything that would be fraudulent in nature at the PTO, PTA level, but that is something that we cannot tell you that anything did or did not happen, because there was no controls on that. The good thing on this is, after discussing this with management, it has already been corrected. So we will not have any issues going forward on that whatsoever. At least that's our anticipation whenever we test it next year. And the last item that we noted is a finding on page 13, we noted one teacher who was teaching outside of his area of certification. I think in this situation, he was teaching citizenship, which requires a social security, I mean, social security, social studies certification, and only had a certification for history and earth sciences. We noted just one instance, management corrected that when we noticed that, and moved somebody else into the state monies that was eligible, so there was no loss of funds on that. And just as a side note on this, I mean, I've been working on schools, I guess, 24 years now, that's really about all that I've ever done, and that's really all our firm does now. And going back to when I started, we used to see this somewhat regularly, not a lot, but somewhat regularly, and it kept getting tighter and tighter as the economy would be going real well. So coming up into 2005 through 2008 or '09, we were seeing it somewhat regularly. Then, what we've seen when the economy dropped, we really didn't have any of those types of issues anywhere near as much. The point is, now I think the economy is maybe coming back a little bit, and the past two years, we've been seeing a few more of these items reported as our findings throughout the state. So that's something, I think it's just getting a little bit tighter for finding the people in the right positions, and I think it's just going to require good diligent monitoring on the part of the HR department to make sure that we don't have those going forward, because we are sort of seeing a little bit of a trend on that statewide with the districts that we audit. Let me see. And then the last thing I was going to present to you, as far as any reportable type items, is a single document that you have, it's a management letter. These would be any internal control items that were, you know, small in nature, not significant enough to be reported as a finding, just this one-page document. And this is something that the federal government wanted us to start looking at two years ago, is the cash drawers for the child nutrition program. And at one of the schools we visited, the cash drawer was not being attended to by a cashier, leading to the fact that maybe a student could come by and take some money out of that. We report that to you, that the school should take that seriously and should correct that. In the end, though, it is pretty minor, because you're not going to have huge losses of dollars from that cash drawer, because it would be reconciled at the end of the day and caught that way. So in the end, we're required to report it, but nothing that I would think would be of significant concern. Management has told it to the staff, and I think that should be corrected, hopefully going forward as well. The very last thing I was going to go over is a required communications letter, which is a two or three-page document that's stapled together. And unfortunately, I think it's part of my job, it's our job to report the negative items that we find, that's just the nature of an audit and what we do. But this letter came about from the accounting standards back when Enron occurred, when the fiasco there, and then the debacle of Enron. Congress stepped in and said, you know, you accountants, you need to start reporting to the governing boards on the results of specific items from your audit. You see, and I tell you that, and you say, well, man, that's just common sense, everybody should have been doing that for years and years. But that wasn't the case until Enron failed and Congress stepped in. And the bulk of this letter, I'll tell you, is sort of boilerplate items that we must communicate, so I'm not going to go over each and every item with you. But really, this does tell you, if you read it, the very good news items that I would say is a result of the audit. We had no disagreements with management, everyone was very open to the inquiries that we had. This was our first year doing the audit for Buncombe County Schools, so you know, it's going to be a little bit different, maybe than what they're accustomed to in the past. We went out to some of the schools this year, we visited the folks in child nutrition, the different department heads, you know, at the schools, the principals, bookkeepers. Everyone was open to any inquiries we had. When we asked for documents, we received that documentation, or the documents and documentation in a timely manner. And, you know, I'll tell you, from an auditor, whenever we sit here and we ask somebody for information, and it takes two weeks to get it to us, I mean, you're going to sit here and say, well, you know, they should have had this X number of days before, what are they doing, recreating it, or something like that, just raises your eyebrows, or they don't want to take the time to answer your inquiries. So a very good relationship, and very, very appreciative of all the assistance that we had during the course of the audit. So that's, really, there's a lot in that letter, it's a three-page letter, but the main thing is, is that the relationship and the cooperation that we did receive from management, so we are indeed very appreciative of that. Does anyone have any questions for me at this time?
I have just a couple.
Yes.
If I could. It's first year for us, how many school systems in North Carolina do you do this for?
I'm the partner on 14 accounts, and our firm does 46.
And as you compare us to other folks that you do this with, how do we stack?
I think you've got very quality management and very conscientious folks who really do a good job, in all honesty. You've got a few findings that are reported, but for a district this size, it's going to be hard not to have some items to be reported.
And I'm going to ask this question as praise for our folks and our staff. We had one instance of a purchase order not prepared prior to the purchase of goods or service. Out of how many?
Oh, that's a tough question.
Ms. Frisby, how many purchase orders in a calendar year?
Oh.
Dr. Baldwin, I would say to you, and pass on to everybody, that's outstanding. I almost, when I saw this, I almost thought that they're just kidding with us, because I knew it was in the thousands that we did, I didn't know how many, but that's outstanding. So.
That's right. Like I said, we wouldn't report that if it was the first year and we hadn't been a carryover. That's just the requirements. You're exactly right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other board members? Well, thank you very much, and congratulations, Ms. Frisby.
Thank you.
And Buncombe County Schools. Great. Great, thank you. Beg your pardon? Well, I think you ought to have to stay. So the finance report is included in this, or is this a second item?
No, wait, that's just information. It's on your agenda. I was coming up with a list of items.
Okay. So now we're on the action agenda, budget amendment number three. Are there any questions about this amendment?
Madam Chair, I do have a question, but I have to rifle through my papers to catch up with you here.
Okay.
If you'll just have a minute of patience with me, so I find my notes.
Oh, indeed. There's a lot of paper here tonight.
Yes. So Ms. Frisby, this was a question that I asked you earlier, and you gave a great answer, but I think it's good for the public to also hear the same answer.
Absolutely.
So in the state public school fund, we have a reduction, under classroom teachers, we have a reduction of $314,580 for this budget year. And so my question, which I sent to you and Dr. Baldwin, was, does that mean we're going to have to cut teaching positions for this year? Oh, no, hair starts to catch on fire. And so could you explain to me?
Absolutely.
Why we're not having to reduce?
When we presented the original budget document back in October, we had estimated what we thought our charter school reduction would be, and had already included that in the original budget. This number just shores up the numbers. We did not get our charter school reduction finalized until November. So this number shores up our books to match what the state side is now, but we had already estimated what we thought the reduction would be and incorporated that. So there will not be an additional teacher reduction.
So we have the $300,000 somewhere else in our budget to be able to cover those teaching positions.
Yes, ma'am.
And Dr. Baldwin, you made a very good point about, it doesn't necessarily mean we're in the clear in terms of the legislature and the discussions that are happening there, and there could be further cuts coming down the pike. And it seems like it would be good for the public to know, in terms of calling their legislatures, about some of this legislation that's being discussed. Could you tell us a little bit more about that?
Well, we had several discussions with our principals over the last couple of days in the concern, the concern for the budget for next year, from our standpoint, really rests with, and I'm going to call it an unfunded mandate that is currently in law, in the books, to take effect for the school year 2017-18. And that is a change in the formula, the allotment, the requirement of the number of teachers in kindergarten through third grade. The impact for Buncombe County Schools alone, and this is statewide, this is not just Buncombe County Schools, but that impact would force us to identify 80 additional positions in K3. That's a dual problem, because number one, the funding for 80 additional positions is roughly around $4.2 million. And I think this board has heard this over the past several years. We have yet to regain the status that we had from a school budget standpoint prior to 2008-'09. And so for us, what that means, what we would face, is a significant, I wouldn't even use the term catastrophic, reduction in force. So again, our hope, certainly our voice, our active voice, is to implore our General Assembly, and specific now to our State Senate, to adjust that the House of Representatives, state representatives did prior to breaking recently, did adopt a bill that mitigates that to a certain degree. And so our hope is that the State Senate will do the same to avoid this. The second area of that particular mandate is, the problem is also the space. Because now we would be faced with, well, where do we find space for 80 additional kindergarten through third-grade teachers? So we have a lot of voices, I think we need to add to. So, we have a lot of voices, I think we need to add to those and actively pay close attention over the next several months. And again, our hope is that the General Assembly will mitigate that law that is now set to go into effect.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Well, just to tag on to that, Ms. Churchill, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that the number-one priority for the North Carolina School Board Associations on the legislative agenda for this year, with the General Assembly as they come back into session?
Absolutely, and I think they've worked really hard on coming up with a great compromise that would benefit most everybody involved, so.
And, I think, Dr. Baldwin, but help me if I'm wrong, but the third problem with it, if it goes in and you have to do reduction in force, you're, it's, these are recurring issues. The space doesn't suddenly become a non-issue after one year. The textbooks, the other things that go on, these are things that will be recurring issues without something done that we'll have to deal with year after year after year. Does that, does that make sense?
That is exactly right, and sometimes we forget, when we talk about funding for personnel and funding in the human resources area, it is the vast, vast majority is a recurring cost to the school system.
Thank you.
And I think the other thing we need to really point out is the positions that we are talking about primarily are going to be in the arts. And, I have a daughter who participates in the arts, and I can't imagine that her not having the opportunity to participate in that. It has been a highlight of her school career.
Other comments? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Three as presented.
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the action agenda is the Zeugner Pool Replacement. Approval of designer contract. Do members, are there any members of the board that have questions for Mr. Fairley?
I have one question.
He's coming down the steps.
I'm not sure it's worth the trip down the steps, because it's just a yes-no question, but... So, this contract, and it's been a while since I've looked at one of these, so I'm assuming this is standard, but I just want to make sure. So, it's not for a certain amount, but it's for 6.9% of the project construction costs?
Correct.
And is that a standard percentage for such contracts?
The percentages vary from about 6% to 10% would be. If you're doing a smaller, messy renovation job, it's going to be higher. If you're doing a very large, clean job, you're going to be closer to the 6%. So, this is somewhere in between.
The lower end of the range.
Yeah.
Well, that was not just yes or no, but that was even more helpful. Thank you.
Other board members have questions for Mr. Fairley? Then I would entertain a motion to approve and execute the architect-owner contract for Novus Architect for the Zeugner Pool Replacement and authorize the bidding of the project to begin.
So moved. Got motion.
Oh, my goodness, we've got motions.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is an item that, it's important that we move on, we've been working on this for a long time. We now have the calendar for the middle, I'm sorry?
Um, did you get the vote?
Did I vote? Did we vote? Let's vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? I told Mr. Campbell tonight would be a night to pay attention to me. Okay, now it's time for us to discuss the calendars for the middle and early college. I hope we can do those together without objection. And, are there any questions from the board about these two calendars?
I had just one question.
Ms. Swanger?
Ms. Swanger?
Ms. Lopez?
So, on the other school calendars, not middle and early college, there are dates in red, I know, which are the dates that if there are snow days, we are likely to lose those holidays or whatever. And I don't see that here, so is it different with middle and early college in terms of how the snow days are handled?
Will you come down and bring those copies? Middle college and early college are a bit different, just because they're on the AB Tech campus and trying to align them to those calendars, because their students are taking college-level courses. So, we do individualize their snow plans, their makeup plans to meet that.
So, there aren't certain days that they're likely to lose that they could know ahead of time?
Right, because they are both, like Ms. Swanger said, cooperative innovative high schools, we're not bound by the two bookends.
I see.
But, because their calendars, they're different than the county calendar as a whole, they're different from each other, it's, they have to be individualized. And we work with those parents and do that.
And again, they have to meet the same 1,025 hours to be, even though they're...
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I really commend Ms. Swanger, Ms. Lopez, for working on the calendar, it is not an easy task. So, I'm going to combine these two items and would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the middle college and early college calendars for 2017-2018.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On the consent agenda, we have the minutes from December 1st. We have the personnel report with an addendum. We have student picture package recommendation for 1718. A change of service provider for the building automation controls. I would entertain a motion to approve these consent agenda items.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our future meetings, we will be meeting February 2nd here in the Minitorium, and the Board of Education will hold a special closed session, work session, on February 2nd at 3:00. We've already been told that we're going to learn about advanced ed at that time. And, the National Board, School Boards Association Annual Conference will be March 25 and 26. I would adjourn, is that correct, Mr. Campbell? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
What's wrong with you? Let's go home, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's 7:39!